If everyone can start taking their seats, we'll be starting shortly. Can everyone please take their seats so we can get, be started? Good evening, thank you all for coming. I know you're all here to see our Halloween costumes, right? That's why everyone's here tonight. Um, okay, to get started, pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon Fios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Waidell?
The Oldbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of the state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Francisco?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Ms. Jodri?
Here.
Ms. Mazone?
Here.
Mr. Slade?
Here.
Mr. Solakowski? Mr. Vangetason?
Here.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We all stand for the pledge and remain standing afterwards. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Please remain standing. Move the Board of Education to acknowledge the death of Mary Ann Oladuko, retired Transportation Secretary, and express a particular sympathy to her family and friends. Thank you, please be seated. Phoenix, can you do the ethics report, please?
The board member will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
Thank you. I wanted to take a moment and discuss with the board something that we should also be updating with the public on a regular basis for somewhat, um, just wanted to go over our district goals and our board goals. Excellence in education, we want to ensure benchmarks are in place for all students to rise, to raise the bar to improve academic and educational growth for all students. Financial resilience, continue to investigate ways to optimize education efficiencies. The whole child, investigate making facilities more inclusive for all students and develop measurements of progress in performance, performance of all students. Um, I know with the financial resilience, we have been working with the long-range plan and definitely working on that and the others here. Board goals, non-conflicted members, um, we did not complete the CSA evaluation because we didn't need to this year. Review and revise bylaws and policies through the development of a schedule for review, improve board synergy, team building, professional development, and engage in a professional development to achieve board certification, and work to understand the district budget through professional development from the business administrator and possibly the NJSA. So we have been definitely taking David work more and working on the, um, the district budget and I think our shirts are some tools that afford synergy for tonight. Thank you. Um, approval of minutes? Motion, please.
Giordano motion?
Mazone second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski? Mr. Vangetason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for approval of minutes passes.
It's time for our student rep. Hold on, push the little green button on the, on the microphone.
Hello, okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Jordan Rosenthal, and the last time I was here, not as many of you guys were here. So it's definitely different, and a lot has happened in school too. First of all, the Student Senate hosted a bingo night for our freshmen and our sophomores who were unable to attend the homecoming dance. However, they made the most of it. And speaking of homecoming, our advisors, Ms. Fuentes and Mr. Post, as well as our staff, did such an incredible job making it a night to remember. It was also... It was also that time of the year when the German exchange students visited our classrooms. It is always so interesting to learn about our peers from across the world. Coming up, we're hoping that Mother Nature is on our side and doesn't wash away our Halloween movie night this Thursday, but it's not looking too good for us. Our school's Fall Comedy Rumors is November 20th and November 21st. We hope to see you there supporting our drama department. We are thankful for the return of late buses on Wednesdays, which allows for our clubs to flourish and increase in student participation. Speaking of student participation, our fall sports teams have had arguably the most successful seasons in a decade. Boys and girls soccer are both in the semifinals of the conference tournament. Boys and girls cross-country entered the state championships after a great GMC performance. Girls field hockey won the red division for the first time in school history. Way to go, ladies! The football team enters the state playoffs at eight to one, while the girls volleyball team won the GMC Conference Tournament. Historic, truly. Girls tennis won their first matchup in the state tournament and finished over 500 on the season. And finally, girls gymnastics finished with an impressive third place at the GMC Championship. Continuing on the theme of success and excellence, we get the chance to celebrate a new chapter in Oldbridge tonight, a new superintendent, our beloved Principal Dr. Sasso. Yep, yep, into the mic, yep, okay. Mm-hmm, yes. I can't cry, I can't cry. I can't cry. I can't cry, I can't cry. All right, all right, don't make me cry, don't make me cry. Whew, okay, okay. Where even was I now? Oh my God. Okay, whew. There is nobody else like Dr. Sasso, and what he has done for the students of OBHS, he will surely do for this whole district. Ugh, stop. He loves his faculty, he loves his students, and he loves this town. As the student representative, I can confidently say that we love Dr. Sasso, and we are so excited for your new journey. We really are. We will miss you so much, Dr. Sasso. And there is nobody else better than you to finish off the announcements, and as always, go Knights!
I don't know how to follow that. Um, Matthew, want to do the, Harry?
Okay, under recognition, we have three retirees. Dion Bactisino, trainer, Oldbridge High School Business, 11 years. Donna Seidel, noon hour supervisor, 22 years at Carl Sandburg Middle School. And Sharif Bactis, Carl Sandburg Middle School Mathematics, a total of 32 years. And a total of 65 years for all three of them. Congratulations. On behalf of the board, we wish you much, much luck.
As you can see on the agenda, one of the things we want to recognize is one of our staff members. And we move that the board recognize Glenn, preschool paraprofessional, Erica Cortez. Erica, are you here? If you're here, Erica, come on up. If you're not, we're going to recognize you anyway. During lunch on Thursday...
Erica, come on up. Erica, come on up.
During lunch on Thursday, October 14th, an incident arose which ended with a student choking. Luckily, we have Ms. Cortez, who was part of the Code Blue team, and was able to respond immediately. Ms. Cortez, with her quick reaction, began providing the Heimlich maneuver immediately on the student, resulting in saving his life. Ms. Cortez is an extremely hard-working and dedicated member of the Glenn team, and we're extremely happy and grateful for our lifesaving efforts and to have her on our team. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you to all of our staff members. May everyone... Francis Phil, second. Need a discussion?
Yes, I think. So I'd like to personally congratulate Ms. Trainer on her retirement, 11 years. Quarter of them would be teaching accounting, one, two, and three. I got the college credit, and she's led myself and others flourish a lot in their accounting careers. I'm currently a senior tax associate, and that foundation was set by her. So very important for our career and technical education forces we have here, so I'd just like to thank her personally. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vangetason?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for recognition passes.
Dr. Brayden, superintendent report?
Thanks, Ms. Dantuno. I'll keep this somewhat short because I know we have an important thing on the agenda. I just want to say publicly to this Board of Education and to the community that I was selected to be an interim superintendent here for a period of time, and it's been a great experience. We have a great school system, we have great staff. It's been a pleasure working with this school board. You'll find later on in the agenda that there's an end to my time here on December 1st because of bigger and better things coming shortly thereafter, and which I'm extremely happy and proud of. But I wanted to thank everyone for my time here. It's been an absolute pleasure and a joy to work with all of you in this community. And as I said once before, this school board helped me transition back to New Jersey, and I'm forever grateful for that. And I would hope at some point, when you appoint the new superintendent, that you allow us, I don't know, six, seven days to overlap and maybe to help with the transition. Thank you.
Mr. Waidell, any correspondence?
We do have a few correspondents tonight. Okay, first is a letter to the Board of Education from Fran Perino. Please read this email publicly during the board meeting on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. I would really appreciate it if you can confirm that this email was received. Dear Board of Education members, I am writing this letter on behalf of Dr. Raymond Payton, whom I worked with during my tenure as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. I've always found Dr. Payton to be a valued staff member of the Oldbridge Township Schools. I can attest to the confidence and enthusiastic manner in which he carried out his professional responsibilities. Dr. Payton has established himself as a highly organized administrator who is truly committed to provide the best programs for the children. In varying degrees, all students in his school have always shown improvement. As can be expected in any effort or involvement with human beings, and probably much more so when working with children, there are many inherent factors which can make the process of prediction complex. However, Dr. Payton maintained a genuine concern for education by working with students, teachers, and parents to help students develop their individual potential. Being a school administrator, Dr. Payton sought out programs and innovative speakers to broaden staff and student interest. He has always fulfilled his obligations with competence and dispatch, and always maintained pride in the teaching profession. Dr. Payton was willing and anxious to take on added responsibilities in helping our administrative team. He has always set high standards for himself, students, and staff, and worked hard to see if they were met. I believe this melding of personal and professional qualities would continue to be an asset to the Oldbridge Township Schools and community. Respectfully, Francis M. Perino. Second correspondence is from Carmen Spitali. Dear Mr. Waidell and members of the board, my name is Carmen Spitali, and I am a retired sergeant of the Oldbridge Township Police Department. I currently serve as a Class III School Resource Officer, SRO, at Memorial Elementary School, where I have had the privilege of working under Dr. Raymond Payton's leadership for the past 11 years. I am writing you again because it is a horrible feeling to know that Dr. Payton, who has served this district with distinction and integrity for over 21 years, has never had a single complaint or grievance filed against him until now. At the very moment, he sought the opportunity to use his knowledge and leadership to serve the entire district. His long record of professionalism, dedication, and positive impact speaks for itself. Unfortunately, a narrative that has been portrayed publicly can easily diminish the truth that Dr. Payton has committed himself wholeheartedly to serving the Oldbridge Township Public Schools. It is disheartening to see his years of leadership and service questioned in this way. As board members, you routinely ask important questions about items on the agenda to ensure transparency and accountability. I respectfully ask that you bring that same level of inquiry and fairness to Dr. Payton's situation. After 21 years as an administrator in this district, I urge you to ask yourselves a simple but powerful question: Why now? It is deeply disappointing that hearsay has been allowed to cloud the public's perception of such an accomplished and dedicated leader. I have seen firsthand how Dr. Payton's high expectations and unwavering dedication have elevated Memorial Elementary's reputation across the district. The school's success and positive climate are a direct reflection of his leadership. As someone who has dedicated a lifetime to protecting and serving this community, I can personally attest that Dr. Payton's top priority has always been the safety and well-being of his students and staff. His professionalism, loyalty, and commitment to excellence are beyond reproach. The leadership of Dr. Payton is deeply missed at Memorial Elementary School. His presence brought stability, direction, and a sense of pride to the entire school community. His impact continues to be felt each day through the culture and values he helped create. For all those reasons, I strongly urge the Board of Education to reinstate Dr. Raymond Payton to his position as an administrator in the Oldbridge Township Public Schools. His record, reputation, and results speak for themselves, and his leadership is vital to the continued success of our schools and community. Respectfully submitted, Carmen Spitali, retired sergeant, Oldbridge Township Police Department, Class III School Resource Officer for Memorial Elementary School. And the final correspondence for tonight.
Dear members of the Board of Education, my name is Jessica Domeno, and I am a proud alumni of Oldbridge Public Schools, a current educator at Oldbridge High School, and a parent of two children who attend McDivitt Elementary School and Carl Sandburg Middle School. I am writing to commend the board and for the appointment of Dr. Vincent Sasso as our next superintendent of schools. There is truly no more one more deserving or better suited for this position. While I may not agree with every board decision made over the years, I can wholeheartedly express my full support for this district and for the direction this appointment represents. Based on my love for and roots in Oldbridge, I'd like to share why I believe Dr. Sasso is an exceptional choice. Growing up here gave me wonderful memories with friends and family, but at that time, pride in our high school was missing. I was involved in successfully academically, successful academically, yet I didn't feel that sense of love or belonging that many of my college peers felt toward their own schools. That changed when I returned to OBHS as an educator and had the privilege of working under Dr. Sasso, then my vice principal and department chair. Dr. Sasso transformed the culture of OBHS. He fostered pride, respect, and genuine love for our school community. Students began returning to events like the Thanksgiving pep rally, proudly wearing purple and celebrating their connection to Oldbridge. He welcomed every student, whether top of the class or a struggling athlete, with the same openness, time, and care. His leadership made "go Knights" and "do the right thing" more than a slogan. It became a living, breathing part of our community. Beyond his leadership, Dr. Sasso is incredibly generous and always finds ways to support students in need, whether financially, mentally, emotionally, or academically. He ensures that every student feels seen, valued, and cared for. That compassion extends to the staff as well. Under his leadership, he has built a special culture among the faculty, one grounded in unity and support. We rally around one another, lift each other up, and share a deep sense of pride in being part of OBHS. When Dr. Sasso became principal, that same energy only grew. As a special education teacher, I faced many challenging situations, but his positivity and guidance have always helped me find the best path forward. He treats his staff with respect and compassion, always making time for collaboration and support. I often tell colleagues across the state how fortunate we are to have him. His leadership is unmatched, and his focus on ensuring every child has a meaningful educational experience is always top priority. As a parent, I chose to send my kids, my children to Oldbridge Schools because of leaders and educators like Dr. Sasso. While I recognize there's always room for improvement, I trust no one more to guide the future of this district and the education of my children. I simply want to express my full and enthusiastic support for the board's decision to hire Dr. Vincent Sasso as superintendent. Thank you for selecting a leader who has already proven his dedication, vision, and heart for Oldbridge. Jessica Domeno, Oldbridge High School, class of 2003, special educator teacher, Oldbridge High School, proud parent, McDivitt Elementary School, and Carl Sandburg Middle School.
And that concludes correspondence.
Does the board have any special committee reports?
I do. Um, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we had a PTAG meeting on October 8th. Uh, the instructions in this PTAG meeting was basically preparing parent teacher conferences. They provided a lot of really great resources. Um, you can either go on the PTAG Facebook page, or you can contact me if you want them. But, um, they talked about, especially for first-time parent teacher conference, there's a lot, there's a lot of mixed emotions. But they did provide a lot of worksheets and things like that that you can use to prepare. They also talked about the role of PTAG liaison. They're trying to institute in all schools. Right now, there's one in Forties, and she spoke a little... And she spoke a little bit about her role, that she's worked through a lot of issues with administrators. They're solution-focused, and they've talked through a lot of things, and she's learned a lot. She also spoke about Dr. Rico, who's her new principal, and she said he was amazing and very supportive. And Dr. Rico also then spoke a little bit about the benefits of having a PTAG in schools. So if anybody's interested in having a PTAG in their school, please contact Stephanie Babbitt, and she can address that. That's it. After that, we had an open floor discussion, and people asked what.
We had a food service committee meeting on October 16th. During this meeting, we spoke about early results, 17 operating days in September. We've seen an increased daily revenue of 15%. A number of students taking lunch, that was an increase of 8%. We spoke about how they were buying ingredients that they would be proud to serve. We had spoke about the National School Lunch Program, a pasta station back at the high school, our pizzeria, pizza on Fridays, which is, every school on Friday gets pizzerias from local pizzerias, pizza from local pizzerias. What else did we talk about? We spoke about the hiring of drivers and the high turnover. We spoke about how the lunch ladies care about the students and go above and beyond as if they were their own. There's a lot of things that go into the food committee and that the public doesn't see, and I think by people showing up, it reiterates what we see on our side. These workers, they work their butt off, man, they really do. And they come and they advocate for our kids, and they make sure that our kids are fed as if we were feeding them. So we have to actually give a round of applause to all the food service people, please. Pom-Tonian has some things to fix on their end, and I suggested monthly meetings, at least one rep per school to meet with Pom-Tonian, so they can go over communication, they can go over recipes, lunches that are good in some schools, not good in other schools. So we're looking forward to that for this year, see where we can get with food service.
Other board members?
Yes. So we had our long-range and strategic planning meeting. Brett Tomgen went over the district-wide capital improvement plan and capacity study. And as a board, we're going to have to go through the following funding sources. We could go for a referendum, we can go for rod grants, state energy grants, the county school construction financing program, and lease purchase agreements. And our next meeting is going to be next month in November, and the board will come up with a plan by then. And back to the food service meeting, it was great to see all those food workers standing up for their children, and Dr. Sasso was there too, you know, demanding better conditions for employees. It's really invigorating to see our principal and all the staff members that helped make our students' lives better, standing up for students like that. I appreciated it. Back to me, thank you.
Good evening. We had an operations meeting, and some people may not know what operations includes. It includes buildings and grounds and maintenance and transportation. We had the meeting on Thursday, October 16th, and it was very well-attended. It was one of the first buildings and grounds and transportation meetings that we've had as a committee in some time, and we had a very large agenda that we did discuss. First, we had Ernie Chaconi, Director of Facilities, at the meeting, and he gave an overview of all the incredible things that his staff is doing. A very small staff, I would like to mention that, and he's doing his best, he's trying to get everything done. He has over 700 work orders in the system. Obviously, we have a lot of teachers here and a lot of administrators, and we know that there's a lot of work orders out there, and he's doing a remarkable job in trying to get that work done. He has a backlog, he has 30 days, he's trying to get things done within 30 days, he prioritizes his work orders. So the maintenance division is working tirelessly to get things done. We talked about his staffing issues, whether or not we can hire more staff instead of outsourcing, because outsourcing tends to cost us more than have our own employees. We discussed janitorial and custodial operations. Yeah, there's been some complaints about cleanliness, so we wanted to make sure that we approached that topic. We spoke about snow removal. We also spoke about capital projects for the coming year. We did speak about also the wonderful things that occurred during the summer, new paving, painting, things of that nature. And another topic that we discussed, and the majority of the board was unified in this conversation who attended, about getting air conditioning at Glenn School with all-purpose rooms. It's something that is very close to my heart. We've been trying to do this for many, many years. Glenn School's auditorium, or Glenn School's all-purpose room, is the only all-purpose room in this district that does not have air conditioning. So we owe it to our community in that building, and the board seemed very unified in possibly getting that done. The second phase of our meeting was transportation. As we know, transportation plays a very critical role in our everyday operations in our school district. Debbie Unglett does a fantastic job with her team. As you know, our transportation is renowned for their efficiencies and for their hard work and dedication to our district. There were a few topics that we had to discuss and vet. Obviously, we discussed about the possible late bus reactivation. Obviously, right now, we have Wednesdays as a day that we are having a late bus. There was a vibrant discussion about adding additional evenings to the schedule, but that's something which the board will consider. We need data, we need to understand all the dynamics, because it will cost us money, so we want that information. Also, we spoke about outsourced routes, failure to perform. A lot of times, our routes, our outsourced companies don't perform, they don't show up, so our staff has to fill the void. We talked about fleet condition and renewal. And also, one important area is Board of Education driver and aide retention. As some of us may know, it's very difficult for the Transportation Division to find qualified CDL drivers. And part of that problem is that our drivers and aides are among the lowest paid within the county and in the state. So we need to find avenues of retaining and also recruiting, because we need drivers, and it seems that our Transportation Division picks up the pieces for the failures of the outsourced divisions. So I just want to just reaffirm that we must never forget, sometimes we forget about the behind-the-scenes employees, such as the bus drivers and the maintenance workers. They do work very tirelessly, and they do a great job for this district. So that concludes my committee report for Buildings, Grounds, Transportation, Operations.
So to continue on with committee reports, I did ask Pom-Tonian to do a presentation tonight on what's included in a school lunch, and also to introduce themselves to our district.
So at this point, we'll welcome Pom-Tonian up. There is going to be a presentation, so the board members and those on the stage can go down and sit in the front row or so, and we'll set up the laptop and get the presentation
Hello, everybody. The board asked us to come and talk a little about who we are, being new to the community, and also to talk about some important things about what comes with a meal and stuff like that, so we thought we'd show a brief video, and then we'll do a very brief presentation.
I remember my parents' dedication to bring in quality food to school lunches. My mom and dad started Pom-Tonian Food Service in 1959. I remember my parents' dedication to bring in quality food to school lunches.
Our motto is to under-promise and over-deliver. Pom-Tonian's structure is very different than a lot of the other companies. Our people are food people. We handle a lot of the paperwork, our cafeteria operations in our back office, and allow our people to excel in the kitchen, making sure that they're proud of the menu items that they're producing each day, and this pride shows.
60% of students do not consume enough fruits and vegetables, and at Pom-Tonian, we are looking to bridge that gap. Pom-Tonian's Farm-to-Tray program is unique in the sense that each month, we highlight one local fruit and one local vegetable from surrounding farms. So we came up with the farm stand concept, it gives them a variety of fresh fruits and vegetables, and lots of studies have said that if you can choose what fresh fruit and vegetable you want to eat, you have a better chance of the children actually eating that.
Students have a variety of choices. Deli station, like Subway, the kids just love, love that type of concept. When you look at Whole Foods, Panera, Wegmans, and Chipotle, Pom-Tonian is trending with these kind of concepts, and the kids love it.
So we do everything from waffles to aliments, we do sushi promotions, and recently, we just brought on street taco promotions along with doing ramen. The idea of being able to pick out their toppings, it actually helps kids try new things that they actually wouldn't have tried before, honestly. Next thing you know, they come back around, and they're asking, "When are you coming back? Are you coming back tomorrow? Are you coming back next week?"
Pom-Tonian has decades of experience fostering highly dedicated employees. Our people love the kids, our people love working in the schools.
They can't wait to show the students their creation for that day and bring them in to the cafeteria in a warm, welcoming environment. To ensure our leadership position, we're constantly training our people.
We want to make sure that our employees are using the best safety practices. Food safety is number one for Pom-Tonian.
We customize our service to meet the individual needs of the communities we serve. Our award-winning menu design results in higher sales, and that leads to economic efficiency.
It's a very competitive field that we operate in, but when you take the time to service the customers and design menus that are appealing to the students and to the parents alike, we have been able to enjoy unprecedented customer retention. Pom-Tonian is very proud of the recognition and awards that we've received over the years. In fact, Pom-Tonian has the most nutrition awards in the state of New Jersey. One of the awards that we're the most proud of is for our invention of the farm stand.
Pom-Tonian Food Service is known for treating your kids just like they would treat their own kids.
We invest more in quality ingredients to bring the highest level of quality to our school food.
Billatresh is a way to highlight recipes that meet strict nutrition guidelines, use wholesome ingredients, and incorporate scratch prep cooking.
Pom-Tonian has earned its reputation over the years by never resting on our laurels, whether they're a new customer or whether we've been serving them for over 50 years. Our commitment remains to meeting and exceeding the expectations of the students and their parents.
My mom and dad taught me that family comes first. We love the kids, and we love the communities that we work in. We treat our employees, our students, and our parents as family.
Thank you. So just a brief introduction, I'm Mark Bitovic, President of Pom-Tonian, and I brought with me the team, including my son Matt, who's our Director of Client Relations, my boss, Candy. And then we have Annette, who's our Food Service Director here in the community. We have Tony Bowman, our Director of Nutrition Services, and we have Kristy, who's also Assistant Director here in the community. So this is everybody. We talked about in our thing what our normal plan is for a district, and want to talk a little about the specifics, and what the board was looking for when they were seeking a new company. They wanted a company focusing on quality, promoting nutrition for the students, adding a nice variety for the students. And we also introduced here our award-winning farm stand that you see, and it was very important to the board for us to come out and explain what's available each day, so you can help your children making the right healthy choices. So the farm stand is a wide variety of fresh fruits available on a daily basis that comes with every meal. We would encourage your students to partake of that, and each month, we're featuring local produce from farms in the area. The board member also mentioned that we are proud to feature local pizzeria in the schools, and we're working with, I think, probably every pizzeria in Old Bridge. It feels like it takes a lot of people to feed this many students. We also, another important element to the board was increasing the number of vegetarian choices and salad variety, which we've also done in the schools. And another very important element was the breakfast program. This is now available in all of the schools. We've been doing an outreach to make sure everyone's aware that there's a breakfast program available, and that if a parent or a family qualifies for free and reduced-priced meals, the breakfast is also free and reduced, and it's very important to promote good nutrition for the students we serve. So that's in all the schools. Another thing, as a board member said, that's really important, is the people. We can come up with these great plans, but it's a group of people that care about what they're doing each day that makes it work. And when we first met with the staff here in Old Bridge, there was a level of enthusiasm for the students that I had never seen. I'm doing this 38 years before this, and they're very much dedicated to the students. It is hard work. They will tell you when we hire someone new, they usually last about five days, because we're on our feet, the kitchens are hot, we're doing heavy lifting, so they're a great group of people to work with. I asked Matt if he could tell you more about the specifics. I'm more of the numbers guy, Johnson and Wales graduate, so he could talk more to the menu design.
Hello, everybody. I think this is the first time I'm on local TV, so hello for the people watching at home. All right, so I'm here to talk to you about some of the improvements that we made to start the year, what comes with a lunch, and then some of our future plans. So at the high school in Grade 9 Center, a lot of the students in the building might be noticing that there was more stations open, more variety. As my dad said, we are working with local pizzerias, and they're doing an awesome job, especially Giuseppe's, who put up a beautiful sign for us and really lets you guys know where the pizza's coming from. What's great about local pizzeria food is it gets students into the cafeteria and gets them excited. The ultimate goal is eventually to get them to try different meals, different options, and different healthy items. And we're really excited to see that students are already migrating towards pasta, the pasta station, the deli station, and the station that we're most proud of, which is the AMP station. So AMP is an idea that we've been working on, that actually, we're really excited that the district, when they put out for their proposal, they wanted to have scratch prep meals cooked. We took it a little farther than that by trying to remove some of the additives that we don't want to see in food. So the food is more, what, it should be off the farm and less processed items. And we're seeing honey harissa chickens selling really well, we're doing burrito bowls that are working really well, and we're also working on some recipes coming down the line, and I'll talk about that, or at least our thought process about that in a bit. We have a build-your-own-salad station, and we're even looking at students selling parfait bars going really well. And the farm stand station, which I think you guys will be very happy, the parents in town, to hear that I have never seen students take more fruits and vegetables in any district besides yours. So really good job on teaching the kids, but we go to a lot of school districts, and to convince a kid to grab a fruit or a vegetable that comes with a meal is usually pretty hard for us, to say it nicely to them. hard for us to say it nicely to them, but here they're taking it voluntarily, so it's really cool and really encouraging to see. At the middle school, we added some more options as well, and we tried to start in the middle school by letting the students know that there's a new food service company in town. So we started that with fresh waffle promotion, and from my understanding, in those buildings, the students and the staff could smell the waffles cooking in the building, and it was really just an exciting way to get things going. At the elementary school, we also expanded the choices. We added vegetarian items to all levels, but we're seeing the vegetarian items at the elementary school moving really well. We also introduced the bento box, which we're really excited to see is moving really well. The students are really excited. Two of the most popular ones, obviously pizza, build-your-own-pizza is going really well, but more surprising is the fruit and cheese bento box that we're selling, that the kids are grabbing. So again, really cool to even see the youngest kids in town and in the community grabbing fresh fruits and vegetables voluntarily. It's very fun. When you build a program in any district, there's no cookie cutter approach. There's no one-size-fits-all, and what we're really excited about is meeting with the community and talking with the community. I sent out emails to most of the principals on the first, and not even twelve hours later, almost every principal responded to me, which was very surprising, because I send emails to principals all the time in many districts, but the response rate was awesome, and we had a lot of great meetings, a lot of productive meetings, but the overwhelming consensus with the meetings was the food quality is great and the students are really enjoying the new options. And one principal went as far to say, "It's as good as it's ever been since I've been here," and I said, "Oh, hopefully you've been here for a while." He said, "Yes, over two decades." So I was very happy to hear that. Another thing that we're going to be doing soon is nutrition advisory committees. Anytime I build a menu for a school district, or we work with our dieticians, or we look at what works in districts nearby, it's never exactly the same. Like I said, there's no cookie cutter approach. The nutrition advisory committee meetings will let us sit down with the students, the parents, and even the staff in the building of every grade level, and ask them what their thoughts on the current service, what can we change, what can we add to our menus, maybe what can we alter in the menus to make the program a little more exciting. So we're really excited about that coming up. We also sent out an opening newsletter, and one of our main focuses this year is promoting breakfast. So Annette was at McDivitt School for a PTA meeting. She dressed up as a bee, which was quite the sight, and was testing out honey overnight And last, I'll talk about what comes with a meal, because I think that's why we were originally asked here, so I'll wrap it up real quick. So what comes with a meal for students is a fruit or a vegetable that you have to take with your meal. As I said, the farm stand is a great way to encourage students to take that, but one of those has to come with a meal, a dairy product, like a milk would have to come with it, a grain, so a bread of any kind or rice, and finally, a protein item, which is, you know, your chicken patties, your chicken tenders, the chicken that goes on your salad or anything like that. So if there's any questions you have, or I know there's students back there, if there's any questions that you ever have about what comes with a meal, feel free to ask any of our food service directors, I see you back there, or ask any of the staff and they'll help you out. Thank you so much.
Only want to also briefly mention, good news is the number of students with food allergies is declining nationwide, which is encouraging, but if you do have a student with a serious food allergy, through your district website, you can contact Toni and her team, and they'll develop a custom menu for your child to ensure their safety. The results from these things, sales are up, sales are continuing to grow. We're going to continue to listen and incorporate community feedback so that we offer the best service. We've been in Cedar Grove since 1962. We're still listening, improving, and customizing based on the changing preferences of the students. Really want to thank the Board for having given us the opportunity to serve your community this year, and also the opportunity to talk to you as a community. So thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to open the mic up for hearing of the residents on any agenda item. If you're coming to speak, there is a binder in the podium, just make sure you sign in.
Andrew Lewis, OBA. Not trying to delay this any longer, but one quick thing. Under Curriculum Number Three, I spoke to Dr. Tu yesterday, wanted to make sure before the Board voted that Southwood was corrected. Thank you.
Was it Curriculum Item Three?
Anyone else? Okay, we're closed. There's no stipend amount next to Southwood. We just need to add in the $500 each. Thank you. Superintendent Surge Update, Item One. Move the Board of Education to approve this 2025-2030 Employment Agreement, which Dr. Vincent Sasso, as Superintendent of Schools, executed December 1st through 2025 through June 30th, 2030, pending approval by the Executive County Superintendent. Can I have a motion, please?
Giordano Motion.
Ms. Ozon will second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn?
No vote.
Epstein? Francisco?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Joe Drey?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Mazzone?
Without a doubt, yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson?
Of course, yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
I do want to say, Mr. Dunn couldn't vote due to conflict, not because he didn't want to. So I do want to clear the air for there for Mr. Dunn, but absolutely welcome to the theme, Dr. Sasso.
Dr. Sasso? One second. One second. I do have to formalize it. Resolution Number One for Superintendent Surge Carries. Congratulations, Dr. Sasso. Thank you. Dr. Sasso, the pleasure.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Pomtonian to come back up for a second, because I know every... Anybody hungry? I mean, very humbled. Thank you, thank you. I want to begin by thanking the Board of Education for giving me the incredible honor of leading and supporting our amazing faculty and staff, and most importantly, the incredible students who make Old Bridge such a special place. This Board of Education has been through a lot, and they have never wavered to do everything they can for you students. To everyone here tonight, I love you guys, really. Thank you for being here. It means so much. Means so much. And to those who couldn't be here, thank you. Your encouragement and support mean so much to me. For the past twenty years, this community has been my home. I've seen the pride, the heart, and the strength of Old Bridge, and I can honestly say, there's no place else I'd rather be. From the moment I started my career in education, my mission was simple, to help every student and every family, and that is the same here today. My mom and dad are here today. Thank you. My wife, Sherry. Has been a lot of great moments, but none better than sharing this one in our life together. Our amazing four kids, Hannah, Vincent, Carlo, and Thea is here, my greatest joy. My mother-in-law, Carol, who planted this seed in my heart twenty years ago, and it just proves, never stop chasing what you believe in, his timing is always perfect. Old Bridge, our new chapter begins now. Together, we will protect and celebrate the traditions that make our community so special, while also having the courage to push forward, to innovate, and to reach for even greater heights. The work ahead won't always be easy, but our students deserve nothing less than our relentless effort, our passion, and most importantly, our love. Thank you for believing in me, for inspiring me, and for letting me continue this journey with you. Let's get to work, Old Bridge. It's time.
Doctors, Dr. Sasso, if you could join us up on stage, the boys would like to take a picture. You guys can take a picture with Dr. Sasso here? And we ask a please, at the conclusion of this meeting, don't run away, because I'll have you sign your contract, so.
Now, follow my boss, he'll be following.
Mr. Dunn, you haven't been able to speak on this, so now you are able to. Go ahead.
Yes. I would like to say a few words. I'm free to speak my mind at this point. Is that correct, Mr. Parton?
Yes, that's correct.
I appreciate, I finally got the okay from our attorney, who's been reminding me all the time to keep my mouth shut, because I would be in conflict and I could be brought up on ethics charges. So, I just want to sincerely thank this Board of Education for making the most rational and most proper decision for this district. We all know that Vincent Sasso has been a real benefit for this district over his twenty years of service. Vinny has been one of those members of this community who was really cared about our students. He has gone the extra lengths, he has done what was in the best interest of our students and this district. There is no better person to lead this new school, this school district into the future than Vincent Sasso. I can tell you that Vincent, Dr. Sasso, has been an incredible, incredible educator here in this district. I've served with him, been on the Board previously for ten years. He's always been a remarkable, caring, loving, a very humble individual, and he was the one who I would have picked, and I just want to thank my colleagues for making the right decision. I sincerely appreciate the process, and I want to applaud the Board of Education, all eight members, who unanimously decided that Vincent Sasso, Dr. Sasso, is the leader of the future for the Old Bridge Board of Education. So Vinny, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and I'm looking for grand, grand things from you, and I'm sure we're going to be in great hands for the next decade under your leadership. Thank you so much.
No pressure, no time obligation, yeah. Just grand things. Thanks, very awesome. Okay, so to move on to the next part of our meeting, policy, can I have a motion?
Ms. Ozon will second. Francisco? Ms. Dantuno? Resolution One through Five for Curriculum and Professional Development passes as administrative corrective.
Thank you. Finance, Items One through Ten, can I have a motion, please?
Ms. Ozon will motion?
Slade will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Doydri?
Yeah.
Ms. Mazzone?
Yeah.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions One through Ten for Finance passes.
And he was the one who I would have picked. And I just wanted to thank my colleagues for making the right decision. I sincerely appreciate the process. And I want to applaud the Board of Education, all eight members, who unanimously decided that Vincent Sasso, Dr. Sasso, is the leader of the future for the Old Bridge Board of Education. So Vinny, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. And I'm looking for grand, grand things from you, and I'm sure we're going to be in great hands for the next decade under your leadership. Thank you so much.
No pressure, no time obligation, yeah. Just grand things. Thanks, very awesome. Okay, so to move on to the next part of our meeting. Policy, can I have a motion?
Ms. O'Moore, please.
Jessica.
Jojo, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolution to abolish policy and regulation 5117, passes.
Moving on to curriculum and professional development. Items 1 through 5, can I have a motion, please?
Don't move, Madam President.
Francisco will second. Any discussion?
I have a question. On number 3, the two schools, Cooper and Exhibit, who don't have any advisors for Unified Club, how do, how does Unified get taken care of in those schools that there's no advisors or advisors?
We'll continue to look for someone to oversee those programs, but it's a volunteer position, so if no one takes it, we really can't volunteer, so let's do it.
But somehow it will be in those schools.
We'll do our best.
Correct, okay.
Any other discussion?
And again, on, on item number 3, we will add the $500 each for Southwood, as Mr. Lewis pointed out. So that'll be administrative correction there.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolution 1 through 5 for curriculum and professional development passes as administrative corrective.
Thank you. Finance, items 1 through 10, can I have a motion, please? Ms. O'Moore, motion?
Slade will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 10 for finance passes.
Athletics, item 1, can I have a motion, please?
Jojri will move it.
Giordano, second.
I got Giordano.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolution 1 for athletics passes.
Non-certificated personnel office, items 1 through 3, can I have a motion, please? Francisco will move. Ms. O'Moore, second. Any discussion?
We do have an administrative correction here on item number 2. Currently, it has moved the board to approve the reassignment of Jennifer Fetterman effective November 1st through, uh, June 30th. The change will be the effective date, November 1st, will now be October 28, 2025. And, and June of 2026 as well. So October 28, 2025, to June 30, 2026.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 3 for non-certificated personnel office as administrative corrective passes.
Non-certificated personnel operational, item 1, can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move, Madam President.
Giordano, second, Madam President.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Especially, can I? Yeah, okay. Just trying to correlate this with our long-range planning and the HVAC maintenance, you know, issues that were highlighted, right? So just curious, how does this kind of fix or repairs tie to the long-range HVAC issue that came out of the assessment? So is this going to help us step by step to fix certain things in this case? You know, I don't know for a particular school, is this HVAC fixed?
This position is replacing a staff member who left the district.
Oh, okay, so this is not necessarily maintenance?
This is routine-
It is through the maintenance department, but it's an existing position that someone left that we hired a new person.
Okay, so it's employment of rank, the position itself, not the HVAC maintenance. Okay, thank you.
Right, it's routine maintenance work that these gentlemen do for maintenance workers that, so as they get work orders through our system, they're checking different units. The, what we had in the HVAC in the long-term facilities, that's going to be major, you know, facility upgrades and, and replacements. So these, these gentlemen are keeping the, you know, systems currently running as best as they can, so.
So the T Craft is probably a person name, that T Craft, written in the-
Yes, correct.
Okay, I thought that is some kind of a tech transfer or something, some system name. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolution 1 for non-certificated personnel operational passes.
Thank you. Non-certificated personnel other, items 1 through 7, can I have a motion, please?
Giordano, motion.
Francisco will second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 7 for non-certificated personnel other passes.
Certified personnel, item 1 through 14, can I have a motion, please?
Jojri will move it.
I think this will second.
And I believe we have at least one of our new hires, if not both. Ms. Crowzer. Come on up. I can't see, sorry, I can't see anything, these lights are like, lighting. But we'd like to take your picture, thank you.
Come on up on the stage, please.
Is Mr. Mazzara here? We'd like to welcome two new staff members, um, for certificate personnel, and you're going to-
Yep, come on the stage if you-
Oh, you're both here. Thank you. So you're going to the high school and you're going to Miller, correct? You're going to the high school and you're going to Miller? Welcome, come on up.
Just for clarification, because you'll see it on the next agenda in November, Ms. Brueker is actually going to be teaching STEM as one of our elementary teachers, so we're hiring her and we're making a movement of, an internal movement. She'll ultimately end up in the STEM position.
Thank you. Any other discussion on our certificate personnel? Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 14 for certified personnel carry.
Non-certificated personnel transportation, item 1 through 5, can I have a motion, please? Ms. O'Moore, motion?
Jojri will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sorry, it was Mazzone and Jojri, correct? Okay. Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 5 for non-certificated personnel transportation passes.
Transportation, item 1 through 3, can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move transportation, Madam President.
Ms. O'Moore, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno. Resolutions 1 through 3 for transportation passes.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, and services, items 1 through 4, can I have a motion, please? Francisco will move. Ms. O'Moore, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions 1 through 4 for supplies, equipment, and services carried.
Miss Bellanius, items 1 through 11, can I have a motion, please?
Van Cateson.
Ms. O'Moore, second. All right, so just confirming and clarifying for everyone, our next meeting for our agenda meeting will not be on Tuesday, it will be on Thursday. It will be on Thursday, November 30th. Any other discussion?
Um, on number 9, I just want to say thank you, Jen, and your family, for the donation of 54 Surf portable laptops and 3 Surf storage racks for the classroom speaker furniture from, uh, Mr. Hudson, so thank you for that.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Cateson.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Ms. Jojri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Obstand on 9, but yes on the others.
Obstand on 9. Resolutions 1 through 11 for miscellaneous passes.
Any, uh, board secretary and board business?
Sorry, Jen, no, no board business.
So we're going to open the mic back up, uh, hearing of the residents on any specific item?
Andrew Lewis, OBEA, pet is the point of our left, I'm starting off with a joke. I thought Dr. Sasso would have six or seven votes, but he had eight. On behalf of the OBEA, I want to extend our congratulations to Dr. Sasso on his appointment as superintendent. The high school's loss is truly the entire district's gain, and we look forward to working with you in the years ahead. I want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education. Selecting a superintendent is the most important responsibility that you have. We recognize the amount of time, care, and deliberation that went into this process. The OBEA appreciates your commitment to finding the right leader for this moment in our district. We hope that tonight marks a positive turning point, one that strengthens, strengthens the collaboration among the OBEA administration and the board. We work together in partnership and with that mutual trust, our students benefit the most. That is and must remain at the center of all that we do. We look forward to working with Dr. Sasso, building that partnership, supporting your success, and working collaboratively to move Old Bridge further. Thank you.
Vote, anybody? Vote, Mrs. O'Neal.
Well, now it goes, congratulations to Dr. Sasso and congratulations to our new staff members. I also want to, um, immediate, but, um, today's first responders day, and I wanted to, um, honor the dedication and sacrifice of our firefighters and law enforcement, law enforcement, paramedics, emergency medical techs, and our 9/11 dispatchers in Old Bridge, and thank you for protecting our families and communities. And on a personal note, I wanted to thank Fire Commissioner Marty Ruane because he came to my house at 5:00 in the morning, when we had to make a call because we smelled something burning and we couldn't figure out what it was. And he, he came and he, um, helped us solve the problem and, um, we got, um, it was a, it was a dehumidifier that the motor was burning, and, um, he was able to, help us and we were able to, um, you know, remedy the situation before anything serious happened. So thank you very much to firefighter Ruane.
Madam President, I'm sorry. I just want to echo what the board member Jojri had to say about the national, Jojri, I'm sorry. It is National First Responders Day, and we need to realize and recognize that a lot of our first responders here in Old Bridge Township are volunteers. And I know Martin Ruane very well, obviously, he's in my fire department. And also, he is a driver for the Old Bridge Board of Education. Volunteers come in all different types, they come from different avenues, they come from different professions. They volunteer and they give their time back to the community because of their love of the community and also its residents. So I just want to wish the police department, the firefighters, the first aid, um, the dispatches, everyone who acts in the capacity of a first responder, because you have to be a special person, be able to put yourself out there as a volunteer and a first responder. You are subject to a lot of different situations, a lot of difficult situations, and you have to be a special person to be able to do that. So with that said, happy National First Responders Day to everyone who serves their community. Thank you.
Um, I- Sorry, on board business.
Yeah, go ahead, old business.
Some of the committee members were asking a question about last week's, one of the items we approved, that was for about 350K for MRN, international, I think, MR International for the Chromebook, and we clarified on the session that it is for our 5th graders and 9th graders. But I worked with Mr. Vidal to get a little more insight over the week, to maybe communicate it a little better. It's about like $225, right, for each Chromebook, and we are trying to purchase about 300 Chromebooks in total, so then calculate, we'd imagine the cost, right? And on top of it, you have license costs. I know personally, you know, Google is probably free for us, but as an enterprise, and we come for an organization like school, we do need to pay a license fee, so that adds up. And then to tag these Chromebooks as assets and introduce into the system, so that adds up again the cost. And then, you know, the service to have it set up, integrated to our networks, and you know, the system adds up as well, right? So these are all the costs going into this, so I just want to give that clarity as to, you know, this is something being vetted through. And another important element that I understood part of this discussion was, the New Jersey Department of Education recommends to only go with 3 vendors to begin, right? And then, you know, we got the quotations from all the 3, and then we picked, you know, who was the least priced, you know, in this, right? So that's kind of the process here, just wanted to clarify on that board business item. Thank you.
I wanted to share with the public, um, most of us went to the school board conventions last week in AC, I think we had some great classes. I personally attended one on, you know, the state funding budget, and, you know, as much as, you know, we know most of the numbers, there's two multipliers that the state keeps to themselves, um, so that just kind of confirmed that. I also attended a class on celebrating our multilingual learners and came out, came out with some really great ideas. I've already contacted Ms. Keeler and want to get a few ideas rolling, so I thought that some of those classes are really cool. I also wanted to thank the municipal alliance, they are here. They were here today, this morning, um, in the high school with the Black Poster Project for some of our students. Some of the board members got to state yesterday after the National Honor Society. It was really touching, um, it was focusing on addiction and how addiction contains, you know, one, one moment contains, you know, not only that person's life, um, but everyone's life around them, so I just wanted to thank the municipal alliance for their partnership. New business?
Just to, thanks for reminding about the school board conference, because I was the same person last year, I was discussing, uh, you know, what happened in the school board conference and what did we learn, et cetera, right? So this is a first-time opportunity for me to join, you know, the colleagues over here in the school administration. Yes, you know, we did a lot of gambling, you know, we had a lot of drinks, come on, no, not at all. There are several sessions, right, to be serious, there are several sessions, jam-packed sessions all through the day, just like any technology conference or wherever in my professional life I go to, it's kind of the same kind of a setup. You have to really pick and choose, you know, what kind of session you can attend. The time is so small, the sessions are like so many, there are like about, what, 30, 50 rooms, uh, you know, with building across the, you know, state with all the, uh, you know, school board members and the administrative staff. So it was very, very busy four days, in my opinion. And, uh, yes, you know, we did get some breathing rooms, you know, we, we had some vendor sponsorship, so based on that, we had some dinners. To be just clear, it is not on the taxpayers' monies that, you know, the dinner was on, right? Somebody can think, because we did share, you know, the joy and, you know, the learnings we had on social, like Facebook, et cetera. I don't want somebody to think that we are, add some, you know, time on the taxpayers' money. Thanks to Mr. Vidal to find some sponsors for us, so, you know, we had in a good time on, you know, some vendor sponsorship. Overall, you know, it was a good session for the whole board to, you know, get connected and know each other a little more. I did, you know, spend a little more time with Jay, thank you. So, yeah, that's, that's exactly what happens. I just wanted to share, you know, since some people might have these questions, you know, hey, they went to Atlantic City, they would have done just gambling over there, not at all, thank you. And thanks to Mr. Vidal, who really took care of us, start to finish. And thanks to Mr. Vidal's staff, you know, who have been emailing us about, you know, the plan, the schedule, and a lot of paperwork involved in this to submit to the School Board Association. And again, you know, thanks to the administration for making it very seamless for us, you know, the whole experience, start to finish, we had no trouble, and thank you again.
Thank you.
I have a few things.
Um, first, uh, again, congratulations to Dr. Sasso on becoming Olbridge's newest superintendent. I look forward to working closely with you on all the amazing things you have in store for Olbridge. Secondly, I always say that we have some of the best teachers in our district, and I truly mean that. But I would like to give a huge shout out to all the staff at our preschools. Dr. Tui, Ms. Adnafi, and the rest of the admin staff that work tirelessly for our kids, but most importantly, the teachers. They really do such amazing jobs, and I think sometimes they fly under the radar. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who take such good care of our little day in and day out. Um, today to touch on the Black Poster Project, um, with the cause of the Black Poster Project hitting so close to home for me, it was an honor to be able to go today. I was able to watch him set it up yesterday. Um, and the goal is to reach just one person. If you can save one person who's suffering from drug addiction, from alcoholism, from mental illness, then you did your job. Um, so I want to thank Dr. Sasso for the invitation. I want to thank everyone who was able to put that together because that was, it really was an amazing family today. Finally. I think everyone in town can agree with me when I say election season is the worst time of the year. It brings out the ugliest in people, or does it actually bring out who people really are? That's the, that's really the question. The hypocrisy in some of the people in this town baffles me sometimes, or maybe it doesn't, who knows? What's good for me is not good for you mentality is beyond anything. When you have the teachers' union president posting about how this town voted in three candidates backed by a political party when Elena, Matt, and I won, and then turning around to support or endorse who he wants is a little unsettling. Is this even ethical? I would love to know just how transparent Mr. Lewis is with all of his paying members on their, how their union dues are being spent. Out of all the members, who decides which candidate will be supported? Does a survey go out to everyone to decide, or do you take it upon yourself to just make a decision and run with it? I don't know if you heard, but there's a few teachers recently in the news suing their union for spending their union dues on political campaigns. Shouldn't the teachers' union be supporting all candidates because in the end, they have to work with whoever wins? All this nonsense needs to stop. We teach our kids about bullying and respect, but you find it okay to be doing what we teach our kids not to do? What happens to leading by example? Another question, and this is a genuine question because I'm not a union president and I don't know this answer. As the union president, what does your job entail all day? What are your duties throughout a typical day? I am aware that this position used to be half teaching position as well, and that all changed in recent years when Mr. Lewis took over. As a taxpaying citizen, my taxes pay for part of your salary, and if we want to be transparent, I think we would like to know how our money is spent on your position. Another question. Why are the OBEA bylaws not available to the public? I happened to go on your website, and when clicked on the bylaws link, I was brought to an NJEA page, and it had, said I had to log in as a member. Is there a reason these policies are not public? Again, another genuine question. Diminishing the character of any board of ed member or candidate is extremely unprofessional for anyone. I know you all remember that this is an unpaid position. We are all up here volunteering our time for what we think is best for all our students, whether we agree or disagree with each other. I just stated before how I feel we really do have some of the best teachers in this district, and I believe they deserve a better leader. Someone who isn't driven by their own political agenda. Mr. Lewis, I look forward to your email or call for some answers.
Thank you, Ms. Mazone. Um, I'd also like to congratulate Dr. Sasso on becoming the new superintendent. The superintendent search was a very long process. We've been agreed for hours on two Saturdays. We've had a lot of help from HYA in this whole process, so I have the whole state, the whole country, this is the best that we have, and we're proud of that. The best that we could find is our own high school principal, so congratulations to him and everyone involved, and we look forward to his start in December. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to this, uh, it's a true privilege to welcome Dr. Vincent Sasso as the next superintendent of school for our township. Our entire board engaged together in a thoughtful and collaborative search process. Through that work, one thing became clear, Dr. Sasso's credibility, his deep understanding of this district, and his unwavering commitment to our students and staff, making the right person to guide Old Bridge into the future. Dr. Sasso has dedicated many years to this community, leading the integrity, compassion, and a genuine focus on helping every student succeed. He's a leader who listens, builds relationships, and inspires confidence in those around him. It became very clear and apparent during the interview process, especially the superintendent interview process, and even the assistant superintendent process, to be more clear that we, at least I myself, I worked with myself, I have told this in the interview sessions as well. I became more closer to become aware of what this particular gentleman is about, what he brings to the table. Was so prepared, you know, coming to the interview. He has a vision in his head to solve most of these problems, not just by himself, but by working with everyone. That's the key, right? No leader just cannot himself or herself can achieve something. Working with everybody, collaboration was a key ingredient that I found very much needed and valuable, not just to work with this board and the school district, but also equally to work with the township. Because we all know that in the last one year or several years, we have not really established, not trying to point fingers or blame at anybody here, but we have not really established a good sync and a rhythm of how we need to solve many of the problems, right? So these are some reasons, you know, that went in, in my thought process, and I want to thank my fellow board members for the care and professionalism shown through this process. Tonight marks an exciting moment for Old Bridge, one that honors our strong foundation while looking ahead with optimism and shared purpose. Congratulations, Dr. Sasso. We look forward to working with you and supporting your vision as you lead our schools and the community forward. Thank you. And I have one more item. So, I know we are really celebrating here, uh, but, you know, some of my observations, again, and a personal incident, you know, that took place for me, uh, over the, you know, weekend and literally yesterday. Uh, back from the school board, uh, meeting, you know, it was a very joyful session, you know, the superintendent election was a very joyful, you know, activity, uh, and everything. But I want to take a moment tonight to share something that has deeply affected me, not just as a board member, but as a neighbor and resident of this community. Recently, several residents in my neighborhood reached out to me with questions about rising school taxes and how our school system is managing its finances. Like many of them, I have personally felt the impact of these increases. In response, I decided to hold a small, private Zoom session with my neighbors, people I live beside and speak to every day, to walk through publicly available information and help clarify the situation. At the very beginning of that meeting, I made it clear that I was speaking as a private citizen, not in my official capacity. My goal was to provide information, answer questions, and encourage civil conversation. The discussion went smoothly until we noticed something troubling. Someone had joined the meeting under a name similar to one of our neighbors, began posting questions in the chat and challenged the legitimacy of our gathering. When asked where they lived, they gave an incorrect street name. Another participant also appeared unfamiliar to anyone in our group. It became apparent that our private neighborhood session had been somehow shared or accessed by individuals pretending to be community members. Later in the discussion, when someone asked for my personal view as a citizen on upcoming elections, I responded honestly, again, as a private person. But these outsiders began using the chat to oppose my remark, seemingly to influence others and create confusion. That behavior crossed a line, not just toward me, but towards respectful civic discourse. In a time when trust and transparency are so important, intruding into a private community conversation under false identities undermines both trust and transparency. It discourages civic engagement and damages the sense of safety residents should feel when talking openly with each other about public issues. I share this not to point fingers, but to raise awareness about how fragile community trust can be when ethical boundaries are ignored. Whether we are public officials or private citizens, each of us has a responsibility to conduct ourselves with honesty and respect. We can disagree, but the disagreement must come from a place of truth and neighborly integrity. I hope that as a board and as a community, we affirm the importance of respectful dialogue. No one should feel misled, spied upon, or politically targeted for trying to share public information with their neighbors in good faith. Now, just to add on, during the same Zoom session, the anonymous or disguised person posted in the group chat recommending three specific school board candidates. This raised further questions among my neighbors about the credibility of those recommendations. I want to clarify for the record that these candidates are widely known in our district as being supported or endorsed by OBEA, our local teachers' association. As we all may know, OBEA is affiliated with NJEA, the New Jersey Education Association, which is the state's largest teachers' union. NJEA's, NJEA's public filings, official statements, and independent analysis have consistently documented the support for certain political party campaigns and causes. You must all know which political party and whatsoever. This is school board. I do not want politics personally, and B board members here do not want politics and professionally. It's important to stress advocacy and endorsement are where every organization's right. However, when school board candidates are promoted or supported by organizations tied to statewide politically aligned groups, it blurs the essential boundary between education and politics. School board elections are meant to be nonpartisan and directed by the needs of families, students, and the broader community. Outside political influence risks undermining our decision-making, shaking confidence that choices are made in students' best interest. Such endorsement practices, just like disruptive behaviors in private dialogue, erode fairness and transparency. They breed mistrust, making residents wonder whether board decisions reflect our community's priorities or those of larger organizations with more distant agendas. We must stand for a system where every candidate is measured by their commitment, integrity, and record, not by the weight of endorsements or support from politically connected organizations. Let's keep our focus on what matters serving our students and community above all. Thank you for listening and for continuing to value, respect, and integrity in our schools.
Madam President? I just want to echo, uh, what the board member Mazone and my fellow board member Redakaskin has discussed. I think that politics does not belong in the board of ed, and we all know that. However, we need to make sure that we keep political parties out of this process as well. So we all know that the Republican Party in this town is going around advocating certain people for the school board. They've done it last year. They did it this year. They're constantly hanging door hangers for these candidates as well. So it's just not the OBEA, it's also the Republican Party doing it as well. So I agree with my fellow board members that there should be zero influence. And we should denounce, as a board, to keep politics out of what we do, okay? I know firsthand, I am like the plague to the Republican Party. I know it, and I'm a, I'm a Republican, I'm a conservative. But I don't think the way they do when it comes down to education. So if we're going to try to push out the OBEA, then we also have to push out the powers that be in the Republican Party in this town because you know what? They influence very much the process as well. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes. I would also like to thank the first president, very, very important. They've been around for millions of years, they're helping out the career of different. Also, today is a hundred and eighty-sixth birthday of Statue of Liberty. Something that somebody totally forgets about. And Dr. Sasso, I'm looking forward to working with you for the next year. Thank you. Good luck. Oh, also, Dr. Bragan, thank you for filling in.
Okay, so I'm just gonna chime in, and this isn't personal, so I don't want anybody taking this personally. It's just fact. And it's like, what came first, right? The chicken or the egg? So like this whole thing, and I think I've used this term before, but like, everyone is always saying how this race for this board of education is going to be political, and it shouldn't, and I agree with you. Um, but it's also like jumping in a pool and trying not to get wet. Like it, it's almost impossible, like politics is ingrained in almost everything that we do, and I'd love to see politics disappear from this race, but everybody would have to commit to that, and I'm just tired of the double standard. Um, it's just, the hypocrisy is just so staggering in this town, and it's really frustrating to watch when our own union, an organization that was created to support all of our teachers, and supposed to be inclusive of everybody, isn't. They're not inclusive of everybody's political views, and not all teachers have a say in who the union endorses, and that's just factual. The union, the NJEA, is the largest contributor to the Democrat campaign in the state. So, so to think about a local, you know, politic, political group versus the power and the influence that the NJEA has is just no comparison. Um, I would love to also see it disappear. So maybe, maybe we can work on that. Maybe we can, you know, or maybe our union can be a little more inclusive and stop endorsing candidates, and, and maybe we can start there. Um, and again, it's not personal. Um, okay, I would really like to end on a good note. I don't know if anybody has anything more to say about that. Um, but I wanted to just say a few things. I wanted to thank the teachers at the high school, um, because they just finished up conferences, and I know how conferences can be really difficult and bouncing between so many students, and I had the opportunity to meet with my, my daughter's teachers, and I was so blown away um, by the involvement of these teachers and the communication that they've had, um, with the parents and their, of their children. Um, and the passion and the love that they have for their subject areas. I mean, I sat in their rooms like in total disbelief of just how, um, experienced they are and how much they care about the kids and the high standards that they hold for them. So I just want to say thank you to our high school teachers who, um, you know, just got through conferences and sharing all kinds of information. Um, just to reiterate, I also attended the Black Poster Project last night and today, and I have to say I was not mentally or emotionally prepared for what I was about to take in, um, and I think that if we save one of our students, then their mission of that group is completely successful. So I, I hope to see that continue at the high school. So I wanted to just share a couple of things that I screenshot here. Give me one second. Of course, I lost it when I needed. Okay, so SEPTA is going to be having their next meeting on Thursday, November twentieth, at six thirty in Olbridge High School Learning Lab, um, in the front, so if you enter through, um, the high school door one. And they would like to share, among other agenda items, that Dr. Vincent Sasso, our superintendent of Olbridge Public Schools, will discuss ways to strengthen relationships among families, educators, and administrators through open dialogue, shared understanding, and collaboration that benefits every student. So I'm really looking forward to that, and I hope to see everybody there. Um, I know that our student representative went through a lot of accomplishments tonight, and there was just one more that I wanted to add. I think since the beginning of the year, or even just in October, we've gotten quite a few emails from Ms. Nae. Um, and the band is pretty amazing, so I just wanted to share, I don't know if these are going to be in the right order, but there was, um, one of the first weekends in October, they competed at the Monroe High School competition and placed first, winning best music, best visual, and best effect, and, uh, tied overall for best visual. Um, that weekend after that, they hosted US Bands Competition and placed first with a score of eighty-six point one, winning best overall effect, music, visual, and best percussion. And I think it was this past weekend, they performed at the Hillsboro High School Band Competition and placed first with a score of eighty-six point five, winning best music, best overall effect, and best percussion. Uh, and next week, they're heading to Robbinsville and TCNJ for state championships, so I think that really speaks, um, pretty largely to our performing arts, um, and bands. So thank you, Ms. Nae, for sharing, and I hope that, um, all the staff members continue to share all the great news with us. And I think I'm done.
I just wanted to say that the next special services meeting is ten thirty, uh, October thirtieth, at seven PM in the admin building. We hope to see everybody there.
Oh, can I make a request?
Last time you guys made a request, we ended up in costumes, and we bought shirts, like.
But that works out really well. Um, so I think that we've done this kind of here and there and made, um, a, what am I, flyers to advertise our meetings. I think it's kind of fallen on the committee chairs. Can we maybe commit to making sure we have, even if it's a really simple, simple flyer with a date and a time that we can get out to the public for each of our committee meetings to advertise? Would that be helpful?
So there is a flyer that goes out from the district, just those of us that like to play in Canva.
Same, because I love Canva, but.
We're, we're making really pretty ones, but, you know, we can talk as a board about trying to be more.
I have one thing, a couple, two, three things. Um, the Olbridge Education Foundation is having their flea market November ninth at the Grade Nine Center in the parking lot. I think we have about fifty, fifty-five vendors, uh, so come down to support the flea market, support the vendors, supports the foundation. Um, congratulations to Dr. Sasso. Proud day for him, proud day for, proud day for Olbridge. And then, yes, thank you, Dr. Bragan. Uh, short time we met, you inject a lot of great ideas. Uh, congratulations on your next journey, and it was a pleasure.
We still have him next month. He's not like.
Oh, okay, so congratulations and happy Thanksgiving.
Does that mean you're not coming next month?
Happy Halloween. Happy Halloween.
All right. If no one else, I wish all the students that celebrate Halloween have fun and safe trick-or-treating. The families that are celebrating, enjoy, and have a good break next week for Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Motions are going to...
Giordano motion.
It's almost there. Thank you, everyone.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Hope everyone has a safe drive home. Thank you.